I pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like February 3rd, Commissioners Meeting, showing all three Commissioners present, having turning. Going down first, I guess we'll, best way we start with Department Heads. We're gonna make a little special on the target. So John, I'll lead us off.
Good morning.
Good morning, John.
I don't have a whole lot, but I do have a permit request. It's 25-1. Marla Hill of Brightsby, she's requesting permit for fiber providing service to a new Verizon Tower at 10903 West 600 North. They start the board at 600 North and 1,010 West. Can go east, north side of the road for 840 feet. We didn't see any issues with it.
No issues with it? Okay. Anybody had any objections to this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made in second to approve the permit request 25-1. All okay. Here's three of them.
Just bringing up to speed on what the guy's been doing, of course, there're patchy holes, thread brush cutter, they're still working with RMC, petting trees, in the way. The only important runner we've had, which we've been pretty fortunate so far. We are gonna start crushing millings probably in a week or two over Kiwanah and Rochester. We've got Galatex out very coming in with this machine like you did a couple of years ago. Grind up a portion of those so we can use them in the rig program this coming year. Bridge 161, USI got with me last week and we will be setting up a pre-con meeting on February 26th at 11:00 a.m. at the Liker, meeting here at the Liker, here at town.
What time was that, 11:00 a.m.?
Yes, on the 26th. And of course we got Bridge 170, InterFederalA, we haven't heard anything from Endot on the words of that. Bridge 95, we did get all of our permits, we're ready to put it in. We got the weather and the contractor there.
That's a box cover?
Yes, that big one in South Midlake. So, we got everything we needed to proceed with that. And Community Crossing Projects, still planning on March 3rd, I believe, to open awards for that, contingent on the Endot announcement. And County White Bridge Inspection, we're in the process of scoring. And new dump trucks, we went up there last week, or mechanics did, and everything's in play. We should be getting them this month, all turned together. And that's really all I have for you guys.
All right, any questions for John? Sounds good, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay. Treasure, Jen?
Nope.
Nope?
Nope.
Anything, bring everybody on the cast. Don, how about Cordas?
Yes. I sent you guys an email Friday regarding our postage machine, our contract is up. And so we need to sign a new contract for a new postage machine. The one that we have is like overkill anyways, and they wanted $300 more quarter for it. So we went and priced out a machine just like yours, I came over and looked at yours. And so this is the contract that we are hoping to get approved. Is for that. I sent you also, so. And then, so that's, that's that. It's about the same as what we're paying now, within like, I think, three or four dollars. So.
If I remember right, I'm trying to read my email real quick, you was paying for that out of situation fund or something?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So we just give you permission to sign the contract, is that what you want?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
All right.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second for Don to be able to go ahead and get the postage machine. All those in favor?
Okay.
Carry on.
Thank you. And you looked at it, probably, as we're good there? Okay, okay. Then the only other thing I wanted to give you a little bit of heads up on is that our vendor for our e-pull books, VR Systems, has backed out of Indiana effective last week. So it doesn't affect us this year because we're not, we're not on election this year. But next year it does, that's about $20,000, $25,000 worth of equipment that we're not sure what's gonna happen with. And we're not sure, we have a meeting, I have a Zoom meeting with the state on Friday. There's nine counties being affected. So we're gonna talk to them about what can be done, you know, what we're gonna do as far as equipment and all of that, but I just wanted to give you a heads up on that also, that we're dealing with that.
Did they have a contract, how long?
Well, they had a contract, I think ours is probably, because it was probably, I didn't look at it yet, but it's probably like a four or five year contract, and so it's probably about, but.
It was basically like, it was about two elections?
Yeah.
Yeah, two and done, no?
Yeah, and then resign, you know? So, I don't know if the states, I don't know if the state reached out to them also. They kinda got squeezed out by the state, in my opinion, but we'll just see what happens. So, but I just wanted to give you a heads up, because I'm not sure what we're gonna have to do with equipment and stuff. And new vendor there, so, okay.
All right.
Okay, let's allow, thank you.
Thanks, Don. Good day to Travis.
I don't have a lot, at all. We've got 135 inmates this morning, holding five for Howard County, 68 for Grant County, 14 feds, and then three DOC. I got with Josh last week, a couple weeks ago probably, with this whole mandate on publishing the meetings and live string and everything, we've got several meetings, public meetings that we hold out at the office, so. Mayor Board, 901 Board, Dr. Free Folk County. So I contacted, or Josh got in contact with the same folks that did your room here, who were wanting to do probably an extremely dumbed-down version of that, just one camera with a microphone to be in compliance with the law and that. He came out last week, looked at the training room, and he's gonna get us some work on that, so. Josh said he's got some budget of money available, we'll probably have some, some discretionary funds, we can probably take care of that, so, just wanna let you guys know that. We thought that there was too many meetings out there to try to bring him into here with you guys, and, you know, it'd be conflicting with everything that you guys have, so. That's all I've got, if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Thanks, Travis. So, Doug?
I got a little thing on the FANS code for the last quarter. We did about 3,622 senior trips, 3121 public, total of 6753. County trips was 2,001, we drove 47,280 miles. Worked $3,436, gallons of fuel, $3,026. Gross income for the fourth quarter was $145,000. Expenses was $177,000. And the fourth quarter claim I'm not done with, but I'll email that to you guys. Probably be around the same as it was last quarter, about 100 years.
Okay.
So I'm gonna try to have it done this week.
Thanks, Doug. Okay, go ahead. Let's get to our anyway, okay. All right, let's get one up here, Heather.
I have a few things. First, I have the interlocal agreement for the city of Rochester, which I'm assuming you're now the president? Okay, so Mark Bryan's name out at the bottom, if you guys would sign that for me. This year their invoice is a total of $62,684.15. Normally have that submitted in January, but with things going on in the city, until I submit it this month, once I get it done, I have two copies, I'll have you sign. So Kathy can have one for record. And I just have my end of the year report, last year we took in 795 permits totaling $90,470.42, up about $4,000 from last year. Questions on that, still busy, about the same. The last meeting I wasn't able to attend, because I was in Akron, but Tony had presented some violations to you guys. If you recall those, one of them was in Tama, and one of them was on State Road 17 in Kiwanah. The one in Kiwanah, the gentleman called and said he did hire a contractor and they're hoping to start in the spring. Keep an eye on that to see. The one on State Road 25, he said that NIFSCO is putting them on the back burner to retire their gas service. However, I did call NIFSCO and they're like four weeks out, so we'll keep an eye on that in the next month, because it's been about a year and a half now since that house burned, which is really an eyesore. So we'll keep an eye on both of those, unless the only updates I have for those. And as Rick and Dave were both at the meeting, the Plank Commission did discuss the language for the solar, and they decided to keep it as is right now, and we will revisit it at a later time, but the ordinance that we have written is in full effect, so. That's all I have, unless you have any questions for me? I'll get you guys to sign this.
Thank you.
It's actually just you and Mark Bryan in the office, and Kathy's signing, so I can get that over to them, so they can pass it.
Okay, Scott?
I have an employee that is taking care of a grandparent right now. Need multiple times a business change IP bags, I believe. The employee asked me to come in front of you guys, just so you're aware of it. I know they do it once early in the morning, once at lunch, and then once at the evening, so it should be the morning and the lunch when that may interfere with the time here. They barely use their time, but they want me to make you guys aware that if they run out of time and you guys are questioning why, a set employee, short on hours all the time. You guys are aware from at least February to March, they're happy to leave, they go take care of their grandparents, and they aren't coming back. So it's just a courtesy, they asked me to reach out to you guys, just so the job would be in jeopardy if you guys start questioning what's going on here.
We said something, Don, still be able to get probably 36 hours, you know, at worst?
It, gonna try their best. Being a grandparent, it can't apply for after-M-L-A, because after-M-L-A is only one, one step up, one step down, sort of thing. So this is just a courtesy. You guys are aware.
But she told me she won't have to lose any time.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, that's all I have.
All right, thanks for the update.
Yep, appreciate it. Brittany?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just have a couple, honey. This morning, I was, well, I've been stressed for a while, but I was really stressed about getting registered for what's called CMCP class, it's Center Management Certification Program. It's for newly hired directors and so forth. It opened up in Indiana, otherwise it was out of state, and I figured, that's why I was stressed, because I wanted to get registered for this one, so I did. I still feel a little stressed from it, but it's done, registered. And I think that's in August, so you'll see stuff come through for that later. Here I have, and I said this, this is the agreement for the ADA compliance for the consoles. They wanted me to type up a letter of intent, and then I have attached the actual quote for it. So I have that. They did recommend that I have an electrician on site, just in case with moving the console with the wires underneath, but just in case of run of issues, and hopefully we don't. And Josh is gonna climb underneath when we get it scheduled to have everything unplugged. Do you need some? You guys can keep one, or sign one, whatever. There. So I think now that we have this signed, if you decide to, we can get that scheduled to get that done pretty quick, hopefully. I had a part-timer start today, her name's Rebecca C., now we have two Beccas. She's a part-timer for Miami County already, so there's a lot of trading that she'll already have, including Spillman, so that's really good news, that hopefully we can get her trading pretty quick on a couple of the things, such as the radio and priority dispatch for EMD. But everything else, she's pretty, besides Fulton County mapping and memorizing officers and such, we should get her moving along pretty quick. In regards to what Travis said with the recorded meetings, I did check with Barry Rutter, because we really do talk about some sensitive information, so that kinda worries me about the recording, obviously, if it's state law, we have to. He was gonna check what that mean in the Sheriff's Department meeting room, if it actually has to be recorded there, or if it's just meetings that would occur here. It sounds like we're gonna have to do it, but he's just gonna check in on that, just to make sure. And if so, I don't know, some of the stuff that we talk about, such as IDAX and the ICIC, how we're gonna go about that, because the public can't have that information, so I don't know.
Probably oughta be accounted, carved out for it.
I, I don't know, I think you have to do it in the executive session.
Oh, yeah.
Really, it's same with the Mayor Board, the disciplinary stuff, so.
Probably do your regular meeting on that thing, and then when it comes to sensitive information, call it executive.
Discussion only.
That makes me feel better. And one thing I've been working on, really, it's been the past week, is just making sure that we have the crisis planning and such for the schools, Caston and Rochester, making sure that we have all the information. I've kinda talked to Travis a little bit, I'd like to have, and I don't know if it's up to me, or between all of us, I'd like to have an active shooter exercise. When Gail was, several years ago, we had one down to Caston, and it was really helpful, so that'd be good for the dispatchers too, to practice. So I think we just mentioned it, so it's nothing that works yet, but Caston sent me their crisis plan, and Rochester's giving me their information, so I'll get that added to dispatching. Hopefully we never need it, but we got it just in case. That's all I have.
I know we met with Parkview last week, I believe it was, discussing transfer, and then I went one calls over to you. They seemed real receptive to it, I thought that, I don't know what you thought, but I did. They have some goals or some concerns they wanna address with Brittany, to make sure it all works out.
Yeah, but justically, we just have to make sure that they have their reporting and stuff that they need. I'm really hoping that Spillman will be able to shoot out some sort of report, kinda like they have from their CAD system. I'm optimistic, I know they were gonna do that with Gail, it sounds like they were gonna do it with Woodley County in the past, so it kinda sounded like it was fresh, I was kinda hoping it was further along than what it was. I'm hoping it's not something that I'm not gonna ever be able to provide, like the expectations being too high for what we're able to provide, so I'm trying to stay optimistic. But yeah, we have our first meeting, I think tomorrow, with Roman, which is the EMD, or he's the center manager over there at Parkview, and then I'm not sure the role of the other fellow.
He was Communications, but I believe.
Yeah.
I think he was head of Communication.
Okay, so between him and Roman, the three of us will meet and start going.
Yep.
Hopefully it moves faster than.
Get it worked out, I know they, they had some deals about tracking their ambulances, where their ambulance was at.
And I highly doubt we'll be the first, I mean, we'll be the first agency that does it, but I highly, highly doubt that we'll be the last, especially when we're starting to deal with these smaller counties of Parkview growing, so we'll be the guinea pig. I have faith that we can do it, trying to stay optimistic. It worries me, just because that's something that's really important to me, that we have back, especially with the implementation of police apply, I don't know how we're gonna do it either way. There's gonna be some conflicts, because we're not gonna transfer police call, even if there's medical stuff in there, so. But I'm sure they'll understand.
Okay, so things will work through. The other thing I did mention, I know when we met with Baker Tilly, that's, you know, well, Ron was talking about a five-year plan, this, that, and the other, and he was worried about the ambulances. I did bring that up to Carlo while I was in there, how, you know, what she recommended, and so she is supposed to send something to us, what she recommends, you know, how many miles, how it all works out. She's got a deal on the next five-year plan for ambulance replacement, so if you guys get an email on that, that's what that's all about.
Sounds good, so you just need our approval for your console?
Yep, so that was just the, I've never written one of those before, as far as a letter of intent. So hopefully that's good.
I don't know that we ever have one before, Dave.
So, I did some research and wrote it to the best of my knowledge, I guess she'll probably tell me if it's not good. And then the back, I think, I have it, Tori did sign for the letter of intent, and then also just to approve the quote that they provided.
Oh, quoting, yeah.
Sorry.
The quoting, oh, yeah, it is, yeah, it is. Where was the quote money coming out of, well, I mean, the evidence money coming out of?
I think it's, if it's allowed to, and I'm still learning the budget and what's good and what's bad, but I think I can take it out on the 12/22, the repair and maintenance.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, if it ain't, we have to go to the council and get approved for budgeting, so.
Yeah, I think that I'll be able to take it out there.
We're being a, not guessing down here.
I know, I was looking right at her, she's been really hopeful with some of the things. It's, it's gonna take a little while to get familiar with what can come out of what, but there was good records from the past, so I refer, refer back to those.
Okay. Okay, so, any comment, motion?
Oh, did you look at it, any problems?
No, it's fine.
And I apologize, I didn't.
That's okay.
I'll make a motion to approve?
That's the info.
Both, the $2,000 for Evans to move the console and the, whatever she called the letter.
Letter of intent, yeah.
Okay, motion made in second, any other discussion? If not, all approved? Okay.
Okay.
Carry it through you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Michael?
I've got the annual contract, if you guys wanna sign it. I had Holly look at it there a few months ago. At the last city council meeting, there was an alley vacation over on College and 14th Streets to get that project, housing project started, that's the age-restricted project, and they wanna start turning dirt in May, so that project will get going. The only other thing that I've really got is, once Jim Strater and I get together and sign the MOU, FICO gets control of his 55 acres out there, so we can submit that to the state for ready funding, and we're still negotiating on all the other properties, and you know all the stuff that's going on with the housing and all that stuff, so we're still negotiating out there, but we should be able to submit the initial part property for the ready request, as soon as Jim and I can get it together.
Okay. You guys had a chance to go over the land's contract?
No, he didn't, brought it in this morning. I, I think it's a.
It's the same as previous contracts, what difference is the dollar still?
$155,000, I understand, in area?
That's what's in the budget?
That is what's in the budget, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the FICO budget for $155,000 for the, for the year 2025.
The second.
And motion made in second to approve the FICO contract for $155,000, it is a budget in the title? All in favor? Carry us three O. Okay. You guys had a chance to look at the minutes of the last meeting?
Yep.
Any additions or corrections, or anything?
No, I didn't see anything.
You got a motion to accept these?
Summit.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the minutes, all in favor? Carry us three O. Okay, next, we have a contract here from, we got from Holly, we want to.
I'll deny that one. Oh, did I say that out loud?
Unfortunately, you have already.
I know.
Passed it. Signatures.
Signatures.
The original.
Play them, fellas. So when you're done, hand those directly to Kathy.
So the date you wanna hear is today's date, or today, we passed it?
Today, probably.
Today?
Today's date, so.
You know, going through these, Brad, over missed you, do you have anything you wanna bring up here?
I'll just, real quick, wanted to thank the Commissioners and the Board of Trustees. You know, in the last year and a half, two years, every OB around us keeps shutting down. And our Board of Trustees and the Commissioners, by their appointment of those individuals, have decided to keep ours open, and that's a huge thing for the community, and we've grown about 10% last year. So 10% more births here, and January was one of our busiest months we've had in about five years. We had 26 babies born in January, and we just kinda keep growing in that area. It's a tough area, because it's a $2 million loss to the hospital every year. It's always gonna be like that unless the state changes some reimbursement. The, the check we get from the state of Indiana for delivering a baby is the exact same check and the exact same dollar amount that it was in 1993.
Oh my gosh.
And so for 30-some years, you're getting the exact same amount of money, but your labor costs and supply costs and everything else, else keep rising, so I just wanna say thank you for appointing the individuals you did to the board, because that kept it open, and this community's not one more community that has no babies being delivered.
Thank you for that, you did.
Yep, appreciate the hospital and what it does.
Okay, I have a transfer request here, from a clerk, $4,079 from deputy to part-time, and $4,079. We need to put on this resolution.
You have to read it.
Yep. My voice is a little weak, too, I kind of the weather the end of this last week. Resolution 02032025. Resolution of Fulton County Board of Commissioners, asserting authorization to pay fuel invoices prior to board approval. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County, Indiana, is the elected legislative and executive body, and is by law authorized to adopt ordinances and resolutions for administration of county legal and financial affairs. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners finds it necessary to pay full invoices in prompt manner to avoid unnecessary charges and/or fees. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners authorized, county auditor who promptly provide payment for fuel as claims are verified, certified. Fuel shall be defined as unleaded gas, diesel, and off-road diesel. Resolve this third day of February 2025, this resolution is effective January 1, 2025. Final blank measures. Any motion to accept?
Summit.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Hey, carry us three O.
Just make sure when you get billed for your fuel, you pay for it right away, after having trouble getting the money back in, so. As quick, as you get billed for it, if you would, turn it in your next claim. As quick, as you get billed for it, if you would, turn it in your next claim.
Or have any issues with the Calscul and Red, or else we're delayed getting.
We appreciate it.
Okay, we got some travel authorizations. You guys had a chance to look these over?
Yep.
Okay. You okay with them?
Yep.
Get these signed here in a few minutes. How about, we'll go to the claims. Okay, I got one here. Did you have a chance to look these over, by the way? On the claims document, credit card document, $14,757.88. Okay. I think that's all I have up here. Do we have any old business?
I don't believe I do.
Anybody out here, old business? Okay, new business? Brandon?
No, I don't believe I do.
Yep.
Okay, anybody have any new business to be brought before the board measures?
Hi, actually, I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that the Warman Center has moved to faith outreach. Somehow I become the liaison between my pastor and just any issues that we have directly with the church. The times did change from, registrations from six to now 10 instead of eight. The entrance for that is actually going to be on the Jackson Boulevard side, which is the south side of the building. Last night was the first night, I talked to Don this morning just to make sure there was no issues that I needed to report, and there was only one gentleman that stayed, but everything was good, we got it set up yesterday afternoon.
Is that for the whole month, February?
The whole month, February, yes.
That's why I thought they was doing it month by month.
Yep.
Have you got a temperature parameter that fits open or closed?
That, I'm not involved then, I just wanted to.
Tony was talking about it, had you.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I haven't really been a part of this Warman Center, so I can't take any credit. Like I said, I just become, which is fine, I mean, I think it's a great thing, anything I can do to help, but I'm just the liaison appointed by Pastor Terry Ball, so thanks for that.
Okay. Thanks for the update on that. Anybody else? Okay, if you want, if I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thanks everybody.